And call this meeting for August the 11th, 2005 to order. At this time, I would ask Derek Kaiser with Elizabeth Baptist Church if he would come and give us an invitation, please.
Thank y'all for the opportunity. I have a wife and a student in Cleveland County Schools. I appreciate what y'all do. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning to open up this school year in prayer. Lord God, we pray for everyone in this room that makes decisions for the students and teachers that are under their care. I pray for their wisdom, just that you would give them wisdom as they make those decisions. I pray for protection for the students and the teachers and just a great year of school, Lord. Pray for health and protection, Lord. I just pray for every student that walks through those doors that they feel cared for, Lord. In your name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Spurling, if you would lead us in...
Please?
Please stand.
Salute, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll call on Dr. Karen Sumner with the NCCAT Deputy Executive Director for some special recognition.
Well, good evening, Superintendent Fisher and members of the Cleveland County Schools Board of Education. We got, let's see, but Tina White, would you go ahead and come forward at this time? We want you to have lots of time in the spotlight here, so just let us celebrate you for a few minutes. On behalf of the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching, it is my privilege to announce that Tina White, a health sciences teacher at Kings Mountain High School, has been selected as a finalist for the NCAT 2026 Burroughs Welcome Fund, North Carolina, Career and Technical Education Teacher of the Year Award. The competition does not involve you having to remember that 40-word name for the record. This recognition highlights Ms. White's contributions to CTE instruction and her impact on the students and community here in Cleveland County. I would like to recognize Melissa Wilson, principal, um, her, um, principal at Kings Mountain High School, and Rhonda Benfield, the CTE director here in Cleveland County Schools, for their support of Ms. White as well. It takes a village. The CTE Teacher of the Year Award was established to celebrate the innovation, leadership, and dedication of CTE educators across North Carolina. This award honors teachers who exemplify the highest standards of excellence in preparing students for both college and career pathways and supporting workforce development. Ms. White will be attending a week of professional development with her fellow finalists in December, where interviews and portfolio review will be conducted by a panel of judges from across the state to determine the next CTE Teacher of the Year. On December 4th, NCAT will celebrate all finalists and announce the winner at a recognition event at the Quarry Convention Center in Greensboro. At NCAT, we are committed to advancing teaching as an art and a profession, and we're thrilled to celebrate Ms. Tina White as a shining example of this mission. I would like to recognize as well, Robert Bowers, I'm gonna come forward, from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, CTE Department. We really appreciate you being here to join us as well this evening. If you will, please, um, join me in congratulating Tina White on this outstanding achievement. And we are pleased to provide you with this certificate recognizing you as an NCAT 2026 Burroughs Welcome Fund, North Carolina, Career and Technical Education Teacher of the Year finalist. And I'd like to read this certificate. Um, the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching presents 2026 Burroughs Welcome Fund, North Carolina, Career and Technical Education Teacher of the Year finalist, Tina White, Kings Mountain High School, Cleveland County Schools. And it's signed by Dr. Brock Womble, the Executive Director of NCAT, Alfred Mays, um, Senior Program Officer at Burroughs Welcome Fund, Superintendent Mo Green, State Superintendent of North Carolina Public Schools, and John Kurtman, the Executive Director for NCACTE. So Tina?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you. Do I have a motion, uh, to adopt the agenda?
I make a motion to adopt.
I heard Mr. Humphries, then I heard Mr. Bridges. All in favor? All right. Uh, at this time, I just wanted to share something with the board. This is for information only, uh, something I've been thinking about for a long time, uh, something I wanted to do at the beginning of a school year. Uh, probably come up with this idea, I think I mentioned it to somebody back in February or, or January, but, uh, this evening I wanted to share about an issue that's been near and dear to my heart for many years. For those of you who know me, I've been, was with law enforcement for over 30 years of experience in many of those which I served as the SRO or led the SRO program. Two issues really stood out to me and began a focus of my career, cellphone awareness and bullying. As you're aware, we are, we were a leader in the state in the introduction of a cellphone policy last year, and now I'd like to propose an anti-bullying campaign. I have done extensive research on both these topics. My research and review of numerous studies demonstrated that a positive environment and peer support is paramount. Proactive intervention where students are taught to speak out and step up to bullying has dramatically reduced future instances, often up to 50%. This isn't just another conversation about bullying, it's about continuing to cultivate a culture of excellence, of empathy, and of kindness. My goal of proposing the Stand Up for Kindness Anti-Bullying Recognition Program is to encourage our students to believe in their own problem-solving abilities and to reward the students who actively stand up for others, promote respectful conversations, and help create a positive school climate. Nominations will be submitted quarterly by our principals or their days at need. Those students will be recognized and their nomination application will be reviewed by panel this spring, who will select an outstanding student at the end of the year to receive $500 for Stand Up for Kindness Award. I am committed to putting up the first $500. If any business leader or school board member would like to contribute, please contact the Educational Foundation to support, for your support for this campaign. It is not my intention to create just one more thing for our teachers and administrators to do. This program is designed to provide support and highlight the work that Team CCS is doing to foster compassion, school environment. With that said, I want our school leaders to know that this participation is voluntary. As a special note, I want to thank Ms. Sandy Hammack, who's here tonight, and Ms. Ashley Hooks for their help and support and system, and system, uh, system, excuse me, putting this Stand Up for Kindness campaign together. Thank you. All right. Next is the approval of the minutes with no objection. Uh, we'll take all, let's see, one, two, three, at one time.
I make a motion to approve.
Most of them are Mr. Bridges. Second by Mr. Grigg. All those in favor? That's eight to zero. That just brought me to this, um, I forgot to mention it the first, but, uh, if you would keep Mr. David Fisher and your thoughts and prayers, uh, he had some surgery this morning, uh, and I'm sure he would appreciate that.
Can you just report on the...
Dr. Fisher, I've not heard.
I reached out, he had not heard of it. Thank you.
We got a maintenance employee that got struck by lightning. You, uh, you might, that'd be a good time to go ahead and bring that up and keep him in.
Do you, yeah, do you know his name?
Uh, Dr. Fisher can answer that.
The...
Taylor Crosby.
Taylor Crosby. Taylor Crosby. If, uh, you would, uh, as a county, a school employee, you'd just say he got struck by lightning?
Yeah, he did maintenance.
Maintenance, maintenance, okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Blanton. Uh, anybody else? I, I hope that's, I mean, I don't mean that in a bad way, but I hope that's all. All right, finance and personnel. Uh, there was, excuse me? You made a report?
No.
Oh, yeah, there is no report. Uh, so we got, uh, two items that we're going to need to vote on. We will need a motion in a second, uh, on the attachments from the, uh, the Health Department. You should have had those. Uh, Dr. Fisher, you got anyone who wants to say anything about that, or they stand on their own? Okay. All right.
Actually, there's two documents there, but there's just one approval.
Okay, one approval? Okay, I was reading the thing here, said two attachments, okay.
It shows you, there's an invoice, and then there's a document that provides the background between the invoice. So it is just the, the, uh, school health invoice for, uh, '25, '26 school year.
Okay. All right. Okay, Mr. Spurling, and I hear Mr. Bridges. Uh, all those in favor? That also is eight to zero. Thank you. Uh, personnel report. Uh, y'all have the personnel report? Do I...
I see, did I have any folks on that?
Uh, Mr. Bridges makes a motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Humphries, any discussion? You good?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor? That will be eight to zero. All right. Safety and operations.
The July 28th Safety and Operations Committee meeting was called to order by Committee Member Danny Blanton. Ginger Jackson provided a safety update for, from technology related to the cameras and summer installation. David Pless shared that Daniel Howell is attending the State and Safety, State Safety Conference this week. David Pless shared that no changes have occurred related to the DMV concerns and, and driver's education. Scott Patterson shared safety information with law enforcement agencies. There were no agency reports. Brian McClung shared a list of surplus vehicles that were DWI seizure, seizure vehicles. The committee approved the surplus list to go to the full board for approval at their August meeting. Jamie Courier shared a list of surplus school nutrition items. All of these items are no longer needed due to being broken, not meeting school nutrition guidelines, or being worn out and old. The committee discussed the list and approved it to go to the full board for approval in August. Dr. Fisher shared some property inquiries that have been received. The committee discussed the inquiries. The district is not interested in selling any property at this time, the, and the committee agreed. Dr. Fisher shared feedback he has received related to the safety and operation goals for the new strategic plan. The committee discussed the goals and priorities. Dr. Wampler shared the roofing bids for Kings Mountain High Schools are due on August 5th, 2025. As a result, the bids will be brought to the full board for review, and a recommendation related to the project will be brought to, brought by maintenance at their August meeting. With no new business, the meeting was adjourned. Next safety meeting, Safety and Operations Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 25th, 2025, at 11:45 a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Spurling. Uh, nothing against you, Mr. Spurling, but Mr. Blanton led that meeting as vice chair, and that was probably the fastest meeting. You've done excellent. Appreciate the job you did. I mean, that was smooth and fast. Uh, but anyway, we have two items, uh, the transportation surplus vehicles and the child nutrition surplus, uh, we'll, we'll need a, both items, I'm sorry, do come from committee, so is any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor?
I'll make a motion.
We don't, hey, we came from committee. All right, that's eight to zero. All right, now on the agenda is the Kings Mountain roofing, uh, bids. Ms. Wampler, Dr. Wampler?
I think you have a copy of the roofing bids. You can see for Kings Mountain High School, there are two sections of the roofing bids due to the two different type of roofs on the campus. Part one is for the flat deck, flat deck roofing on the main building and the bit building. You can see the, uh, bids that we received. Uh, it is our recommendation that we go with the lowest bid. In addition to that, we recommend that we go with both addendums. The addendum one adds new metal fascia system to the outside roof perimeter of the main building, and addendum two adds a new gutter and downspout system to the bit building. Uh, you can see our recommendation is to go with MBA construction, uh, along with adding a 10% contingency. You can see what the contingency would be used for, which would make the total recommended, um, bid or price for that project, $749,912. Then the next section, part two, deals with shingle roofing for the mobile classrooms. There are three of those, and then, uh, some of the athletic buildings. You can see the lowest price for that one came from CPS Construction. We recommend using, um, that base bid and adding a 5% contingency for any plywood damage, which the addendum was related to, uh, which made that total one, $113,557. Putting those two, uh, together, the total bid for the roofing, uh, at Kings Mountain High School would be $863,469.
I got a question.
Okay. Are you...
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I got a question.
Okay.
No, to you.
Okay.
Uh, this summer, uh, my grandson worked for one of those companies. Do I need to excuse myself from, uh, voting on that? Because somebody wrote me a great anonymous letter and said that I had a good friend. Well, I had a grandson that worked for, uh, worked for that, uh, worked for one of those companies, and, but just for the summer. His last day was Friday, and, uh, he's going back to Kings Mountain High School. Uh, do I need, uh, I might, that might be an attorney question.
Yeah, let me ask the attorney. Does he need to recuse himself?
Was it one of the, the company that's receiving?
Was it one of the companies that's receiving the bid?
Yes.
Yes.
Out of abundance of a caution, yes.
Okay, I will excuse myself from that because he don't work for them now, but...
Okay, we'll do it just, just to be safe. How's that?
Yeah, because there's a gentleman, uh, somebody sent me a great letter.
Okay.
They probably gonna get to hear me read it. Uh, they want me to resign.
Okay. All right. At this, uh, at this time, uh, I'll, I think I'm to the point where I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
All right. All right. Did you get that? Mr. Humphries and Mr. Bridges? Okay, all those in...
Both parts, right? Both parts.
Both parts, yes. Yes. All those in favor? That's seven to zero. All right. Thank you. Uh, educational programs and policy.
Okay. The July 29th Educational Programs and Policy Committee meeting was called to order by Committee Chairman Ron Humphries. Dr. Stephen Fisher reviewed the two policies up for approval in August, which are policy 8240 Investments and Policy, Policy 4312 Technology Responsible Use. There were no additional questions or feedback. Dr. Fisher led in review of Policy 650 Goals and Organization of Equipment, Materials, and Supply, and Supplies Services. 6520 Use of Equipment, Materials, and Supplies. 6524 Network Security. 6530 Resource Conservation. 6540 Hazardous Materials. And 6560 Disposal of Surplus Properties. These policies were reviewed and discussed as part of the committee's ongoing review of Board Policy Manual and are in the 6,000 section, which is Support Services. No changes were recommended to these policies by the committee. Dr. Brian Hunnell shared an instructional update. We received some good news related to federal funds that were previously frozen and are now being released. Dr. Hunnell also shared that this year, due to a state budget not being passed at this point, advanced placement testing will not be covered by the state budget. Due to the late nature of this notice and the importance of the exam, the district is planning to cover the cost of these exams, which are required for students taking these courses. The committee discussed the situation and supported paying for AP student exams this year if state funds are not received. Dr. Hunnell gave an update on lead teachers and summer instructional training progress. Paula Peeler shared multiple documents from OSR, Preschool and Head Start Program. Some were for board information and others for approval. Specifically, the financial reports for the past three months were for approval. Mrs. Peeler shared that a monitoring visit will occur this year related to the president's plan for Head Start of Make America Healthy Again. The committee approved all the documents shared for preschool and Head Start, which will go to the full board for approval in August. Rhonda Benfield and Rhonda Brandt shared a CTE update related to proof of learning credentials, performance-based measures, and local assessments during the 2024-25 school year. Mrs. Benfield shared that CCS students have the opportunity to earn over 40 industry-recognized credentials as part of our CTE program. The committee discussed the excellent work in CTE and through the work-based internships, which is tremendous. Dr. Titus Hopper shared that CCS had received a three-year Gear Up grant for $650,000 Gear Up, for $650,000. Gear Up is a program for improving college and career readiness for students in eighth to 11th grade. Dr. Hopper shared dropout data and ways that Gear Up can support our efforts to reduce dropouts and increase student achievement. The committee supported this grant and efforts. Dr. Fisher shared feedback along with the draft goals and action steps related to policy and educational programs for the new strategic plan. The committee discussed goals and priorities. With no additional new business, the meeting was adjourned. The next Educational and Policy Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August 26th, 2025, at 11:30 a.m.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Next on the agenda is two policies for approval, Policy 8240 and, excuse me, Policies 3225 and 4312 and 7320. They do come from committee. Uh, any discussion on those policies? All right. All in favor? That's eight to zero. Next, also comes from committee, is the Head Start items. Does anyone have any questions on that? Does come from committee? All those in favor? It's eight to zero. Dr. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just like last month, I got a long time to talk tonight. Y'all did, did run through the first part of that quick, so I got a while.
Summer, summertime, so just, you can save it all for the fall.
I definitely will. It has been a busy week. Uh, last week was busy around central services and throughout the county as teachers turned to work, early college, started back to school. We had a great week. I continue that today. Uh, beautiful outside, the sun shining now, but earlier today, uh, poured down rain, and folks attended different trainings and had lots of things going on. Uh, you've got the superintendent updates, uh, in front of you on the backside of some information that I had provided to the star, um, early today about the start of school, just for your information there. Just a reminder, in case anybody's missed it, school starts on Wednesday. Uh, again, we, we're excited about the 27 remaining schools starting, early college started last Monday. We're excited about the first day of school on Wednesday. Uh, I will make my annual, um, jaunt around Cleveland County and hit all 28 schools that day, so, um, look, looking forward to it and excited about that. Um, you, I know you've heard this information, and, and just like you've got a new student, or you've got a new information system with diligent community, has replaced board docs across our county, been a big transition in terms of a new student information system. Uh, you will hear that and see the acronym NCCS, uh, and that is the North Carolina Student Information System. That is where all of our student information is housed. It used to be Power School. Power School is gone. We, we no longer have Power School. That new program is Infinite Campus. Um, our Peggy Wheeler has done a tremendous job of leading that conversion, uh, as head of our student service, our, uh, student information, uh, team. Uh, Ginger Jackson and our technology, uh, folks have done a wonderful job of supporting that effort. Uh, we're in a good spot where we are, uh, really lots of good things to report. Still a new system, it's like a new car, working out the, the kinks and, and all those challenges, and there will be some challenges. One of the things that we really pushed over years is getting the parent hooked up with Power School and the parent portal there, uh, and now we're recycling that with Infinite Campus to make sure that our parents get logged into Infinite Campus, get their information there, that way they can check their students' grades. There's a lot of communication abilities that we have with Infinite, with Infinite Campus, with NCCS that we'll need to do. So you will, uh, if you visited, um, our back-to-school bash, we had other, uh, a couple weeks ago, had an effort to do some of that there, um, in orientations, you've continued to do that to get folks, uh, hooked up with that NCCS and Infinite Campus. So, again, if you hear some, uh, grumblings on that, that's just, there are some growing pains. Um, Infinite Campus is not something that we chose, it's not a movement, but it is a movement all across the state, so, um, things are going well there. You do see a couple items, uh, in the future with Board Committee Meetings, Labor Day, Board of Education Meeting. I would like to draw your attention to the Outstanding Educators Banquet that's on Tuesday, September 9th. That is at Turkey Ridge, uh, that evening. Get more details. I believe there was an invitation sent to you on Friday on that with more specifics. Uh, that's where we, uh, recognize our Teacher of the Year, Teacher Assistant of the Year, Principal of the Year, Bus Driver of the Year, Custody of the Year, all those other year awards, uh, we recognize that night. The CACRO, that may be a new term for you. That's, uh, Sandy Hammack and Student Services. College Fair is Wednesday, September 24th will be a big event, uh, for our district, and then that rolls us back around to committee meetings there at the end of September and into October. Um, so, no additional information there, just looking forward to a great start on Wednesday, and appreciate all your support.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Fisher. Next on the agenda is public participation. Mr. Bridges, would you read our rules, please?
I sure will. Uh, "Public comments should not address any specific confidential student or personnel matter. Specific concerns related to confidential student or personnel matter should be directed to the superintendent or designated. Uh, comments must be relevant to the matters that are within the authority of the board. Speakers shall refrain from personal attacks or threats directed towards staff, elected board members, or board members, or members of the public. Uh, speakers shall be courteous in their language and presentation. Insults, profanity, use of vulgar language, or gestures, or other inappropriate behaviors are not allowed. The board vests and its chair or other presiding officers authority to terminate the remarks of any individual, and he or she does not adhere to these rules established above. Any person who willfully interrupts or disrupts a board meeting may be directed to leave the meeting by the presiding officer. Any person who refuses to leave may be prosecuted for disrupting a public meeting. Persons appearing before the board are reminded as a point of information that the members of the Cleveland County Board of Education are without authority to act independently as individuals in official manners, matters. Immediate answers are not generally possible and must be deferred pending investigation and consideration by the full board."
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. I have one person that has signed up, Mr. Rod Powell.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Fisher. My name is Rod Powell, and I'm a retired high school history teacher with 30 years in the classroom. Now, I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of friends and colleagues who are now teaching in Cleveland County Schools right now. Now, I've listened to their hopes and their frustrations, and I want to bring their voices to this room here. First, something positive. The recent zone complication where Dr. Fisher celebrated each zone's success was a bright spot for these people. Several teachers told me they left feeling energized and ready for the year. Folks, we need more moments like that, moments that lift morale and remind teachers they matter. But morale also comes from action. Teachers need you to be their advocates beyond these walls, standing together before county commissioners, state legislatures, and... these walls, standing together before county commissioners, state legislatures, and even our U.S. Representative from District fourteen to demand fair funding. Until that happens, underfunding will continue to erode our high schools and our classrooms. Now, the truth is, our schools are underfunded. Teachers shouldn't have to hide wish lists for basic supplies out of fear that it'll make the district look bad. Everyone knows that this funding gap exists. Ignoring it doesn't make it go away. Now, retention is another urgent need. Too many great educators have left CCS Cleveland County schools, not because they wanted an easier job, but because they wanted to be energized, supported, and valued. I've heard from teachers who now drive thirty-five minutes each way to schools in other districts where their voices matter. That shouldn't be happening here. And finally, equity is not optional. You can't say every child matters when remaining silent when immigrant families worry whether their children are truly welcome and safe. That silence breaks trust. We all love Cleveland County schools. We believe in its potential, but belief alone is not enough. As a retired teacher and as someone speaking for those still in the classroom, I urge you act boldly on funding, retention, equity, and public advocacy. If you show teachers you have their backs, they will give this community everything they have. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. At this time, on the agenda, we have board comments. I'll start over here. Anybody over here? Oh, go ahead.
I'd like to just say congratulations to our teacher, CTE teacher, on her nominee. Great job. CTE's near and dear to my heart, as most of you know. Big supporter of our, of our skills, learning in Cleveland County. And I look forward to, and I recommend the rest of the board, or ask the rest of the board to join me at the Outstanding Educator Banquet next month. We will recognize our outstanding teachers and bus drivers and custodians and everybody to be awarded there, uplifting them. So, and other than that, welcome back to school. Wednesday's a big day. Cleveland County, first Cleveland County schools. Look forward to seeing you all throughout the next year.
Thank you, Mr. Spurling.
Yes. Well, last week, they had the meeting for all the staff at each one of the zones, Burns, Crest, Shelby, and Kings Mountain. I attended all four. Got just about the same speech from Dr. Fisher. He was the headline speaker, and, but he had a little different, you know, for each school, because each school was a little different. So that was a great, a great get-together. There was a lot of people excited. The next thing is, our kids come first in my book, period. I've been that way for thirteen or fourteen years. Our staff, our teachers is next, and everlast taxpayer. I never went on behalf of getting the estimates at Bowling Springs School. I would like for this person that wrote this letter to feel I asked him to please give me a call. If he don't want to talk to me by myself, I'll meet him on his grounds and meet him with anyone that he wants to. Because I didn't involve the board, and the board didn't authorize me, and it wasn't about the board. It was about the taxpayers of Cleveland County, an everlasting child. So, person that wrote this letter, feel free to call me at seven oh four, four seven seven, seven one eight eight, and I'll be glad to talk to you twenty-four hours a day. I'm always available. If I don't answer, I'll call you right back. I hope we have a great year. Sounds like we are, and I guess it's going to be head-on, head-first come Wednesday. Our resource officers, I think we've got a good group all the way around, the way it looks, at all of our districts. Our safety, our cameras, it's just, it's just absolutely, we've got your kids safe. And we're gonna do our best to keep them safe. That's as far as I'm concerned. And I'm, I'm sure all the board members is, is for us having good years and safety all the way across the board, our sports and everything. But please give me a call, ever who wrote this letter. Because you might not know everything you're talking about in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanton.
Just real quickly, wishing the entire school system a blessed and productive year coming up, and that's it.
Thank you. Alright, Mr. Bridges?
Just want to say, I hope that we have a good school year this year. Looking forward to the success that our team will bring to our students and community, and good luck with this year. I think we're gonna have some good results come back from our tests and scores from this previous year. So it looks like things are improving and gonna look good. So I just want to say welcome back, and I look forward to a good year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges and Mr. Greg.
Well, we ended up with a good twenty-twenty-five year, and I'm hoping that we can start out with a good year this year. I want it to be a safe year. Hope all the teachers come back and everything is safe for everybody. And also want to thank everybody that reached out and said a little prayer for me during the week's stay in the hospital. I had a light heart attack and two stents implanted last week, and had a lot of people checking on me, and I appreciate those people that did. And I hope everybody will be safe this week.
Thank you, Mr. Greg. I think we all can say we do hope your health and concern keep you in our thoughts and our prayers. Ms. Sherman?
Okay, I wanted to congratulate Tina White and wish her the very best and hope she brings it home and knows that, I know that she will have a good chance of winning. And congratulations to all the other finalists. That's a big, big recognition there. Also, I wanted to thank NCAT. I haven't thought about NCAT for a while, but I was able to spend a week at NCAT when I was working on my national board in teaching, and that was one of the best weeks of my career. And I want to thank everyone that supports NCAT. NCAT is very important to our teachers and everyone that has the opportunity to, to attend NCAT. So, thank you. I hope that's something that can continue for many years. And also, I want to wish everyone a wonderful beginning to the school year. I want to thank all the people that have worked the entire summer to shine in those floors and doing the things in the schools that no one sees unless you're there through the summer, and you work very hard. So, thank you to every department, operations, maintenance. It takes everyone to get ready for Wednesday. And I want to thank the teachers. I know you've been working overtime. I'm sure most teachers worked this past weekend. It's usually like a school day, the weekend before school starts. So, thank you for what you've done to prepare our administrators, and I wish you the very best beginning, and also the hope this school year is our, is the best we've had. So, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year is going to be a great one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Mr. Leffler?
Just say congratulations to our CTE teacher finalist, and hope that she does bring back the gold. We're looking forward to that. Looking forward to a smooth first day beginning Wednesday. And to all teachers and to everyone, we wish you the very best. As I was coming to the meeting today, noticed teachers still at Union Elementary School, so they don't have just an eight to three, or whatever we want to call it. It goes all day, and unless you're married to one, you don't realize how much time these teachers put in. They put in a lot, and it is something that we, as a board, I know acknowledge. We are very proud of what they do. Wish they didn't have to work all that much, but we certainly appreciate everything that they do. Looking forward to this year. Hope that we do have a great year, and things go well, and things are safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leffler. I'll just say ditto to whatever everyone has said, and again, if you hadn't heard, school starts Wednesday. So, good luck to all the students, best wishes to teachers, staff. There is a lot of energy going around. So, with that being said, I'll not keep us here and ask Mr. Bridges if he has a motion for closed session.
I've got a motion. North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three one eight point one one A three to consult with our attorney and six for personal matter.
Alright, Mr. Bridges made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? It's eight to zero. Alrighty.